To teach the Leos how to project, and it's a tough room.
There's no speaker here, is it?
But I can, I mean--
Is there speakers here, Elaine? Is there speakers here? Okay.
There's none up here.
Well, I just will not talk tonight. That will solve the whole thing. I'm okay with that. Okay, it sounds all right. We are almost there. Okay. All set?
Recording in progress.
Good evening, and welcome to the Millbrae City Council of February 14th, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day. And for everyone listening at home, we are on brand-new equipment tonight, so please bear with us if we have any technical difficulties. With that, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Pappin?
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you, and if you could all please join me in standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and one nation, for God. Continuum.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have tonight with us the CEO and General Manager of Bosca, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. And I believe we've got Ms. Sankula, please join us. And thank you for being here tonight and for filling in. It was tremendous, tremendous.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Snyder and members of the council. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. As you said, my name is Nicole Sankula. I'm the CEO for Bosca. And I look forward to talking to you about my favorite topic tonight, water supply. Next slide, please. So first, just some information about what Bosca is. Bosca is a special district that was formed in 2003 by the state legislature at the urging of elected officials and others in the service area, including elected officials from your city. We are responsible for representing the interests of the 26 water suppliers in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Alameda Counties, and the 1.8 million residents and over 40,000 businesses that they serve. The connection between these 26 agencies is that they all rely on the water supply from the San Francisco Regional Water System to meet their customers' needs. This includes the city of Millbrae and its nearly 23,000 residents that rely on the regional water system for 100% of the water supply it needs. In fiscal year 2020, Millbrae purchased nearly 678 million gallons of water from the regional water system, or 1.86 million gallons of water per day. The map on the right shows the service area of the Bosca agencies, and then you'll see it kind of rimmed the bay, if you will. And on behalf of these water users, Bosca's goal is a reliable supply of high-quality water at a fair price. Next slide, please. So here is a map showing the location of Bosca's 26-member agencies, including the city of Millbrae. Bosca is governed by a 26-member Board of Directors, and for Millbrae, I would plead to say Mayor Ann Snyder just recently joined the Bosca Board of Directors and is also a member of the Board Policy Committee this year. Next slide. So this is a schematic of the San Francisco Regional Water System, and it stretches across the entire width of the state of California. Starting from the headwaters of the Tulare River, where 85% of the supply comes from, water is stored in Hetch-Echi Reservoir. The water supply is then conveyed entirely by gravity to the Bay Area and the Bosca region. Along the way, the regional water system picks up an additional 15% of its supply from local watersheds in the East Bay and Peninsula. In total, the regional water system includes seven major reservoirs and three hydropower plants. Next slide. So the regional water system facilities actually lie within an area that contains four major earthquake faults: Calaveras, Hayward, San Andreas, and San Gregorio. In fact, we often laugh about the facilities. Many of San Francisco's facilities are named after the quake faults that they overlie. And the system's major facilities and surface storage reservoirs lie across those faults in several areas throughout the Bay Area. Studies performed by San Francisco following the Loma Prieta earthquake showed that the regional water system was at risk of a catastrophic failure during a major earthquake. Many areas in the four counties served by the system would face interruptions in their water supply for up to 30 days and some for as long as 60 days. Clearly, that's a public health and safety issue. They're jeopardized. It was a statewide issue. Economic impacts at the time were estimated at up to $28 billion. After six years of working with San Francisco to rebuild the aging system, this region, its elected officials, and its water suppliers went to the legislature for help in 2001. Next slide. That legislative process was led by former Assemblymember Liz Pappin and resulted in the passage of Assembly Bill 1823, which required San Francisco to fix the regional water system. That legislation, as I mentioned, was in response to the concerns about water supply reliability, and it resulted in what we call the Water System Improvement Program, which is a massive capital program designed to meet specific level of service objectives or goals related to water quality, seismic reliability, delivery reliability, water supply reliability, system sustainability, and cost effectiveness. When the WISIP is complete, the regional water system will be able to deliver basic water service to the region within 24 hours following an earthquake, and full service would be restored within 30 days after an earthquake. We believe the WISIP, and one of Bosca's jobs, has been to oversee San Francisco's implementation of the WISIP. Next slide. So here are some pictures of projects from the WISIP. That Water System Improvement Program, which was started in 2003, is now 98% complete. The completion is currently scheduled for February 2027. Three projects remain in construction, and these are the more difficult water supply projects, like the regional groundwater in Alameda Creek Capture Project. The full WISIP costs of $4.788 billion is fully funded by the water rate payers, both in San Francisco and outside of San Francisco, including your residents in Millbrae. So here are some of the pictures I put up here. On the left, you see the new Calaveras Dam and Reservoir in Sanl Valley, which actually recently filled for the first time over the New Year's storms. The middle picture shows work being done on the large San Joaquin Pipeline. Those are the pipelines that bring water from Hetch-Echi Reservoir into the East Bay. And the work being done there was to increase capacity and reliability at one of the river crossings. And you can see the size of those pipelines by the size of the gentleman standing next to them. And on the right is a picture that's actually taken at the bottom of a tunnel shaft that was for the new Bay Tunnel, which is the first tunnel under San Francisco Bridge, located near the, under the San Francisco Bay, located near the Dunbarton Bridge. Together, these WISIP projects will ensure that the regional water system that we all rely upon will be able to continue to deliver critical water supply following an earthquake and into the future. Next slide. But it's been 20 years since WISIP passed, and you can't stop investing in a system. Our system that we rely upon is now 100 years old. The O'Shaughnessy Dam is celebrating its 100th year this year. And so San Francisco actually is investing in a robust 10-year capital plan to ensure continued reliability for this regional water system. They actually just adopted today their updated 10-year capital plan that identified and prioritizes capital investments for the regional water system. There's kind of two different budgetary groups, but just to give you a sense for the size of this 10-year plan, it's $1.134 billion for the Water Enterprise and then $0.74 billion for the Hetch-Echi Water. So together, you know, nearly $2 billion. One of Bosca's roles is to provide oversight of that capital planning work on behalf of the wholesale customers to ensure that they're making the right investments with the right costs and meeting the objectives that you have laid out for them. Again, some identification of the pictures here. On the left, there is the Sanl Valley Water Treatment Plant. So in your backyard, you have the Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant. Well, there's a sister plant over in the East Bay, and it needs improvements to add ozone to it for taste and odor control. And so that's part of the capital plan. In the middle is the Tesla UV Treatment Plant that is actually in the hills outside of Tracy, where all the water from Hetch-Echi goes through these pipelines and is doused with ultraviolet light as part of the treatment train for that supply. And then on the right is the Mountain Tunnel Repair and Improvements Project, and that's actually a shot of what's called an added or an access point into this tunnel. And that is a hand-carved tunnel where the water from Hetch-Echi, after it leaves the reservoir and before it goes into the San Joaquin Pipelines, and that tunnel needs improvements and improved access to ensure maintenance of that improvement. Next slide. So kind of shifting now from our capital work to our water supply picture. The pie chart on the left side of this slide shows the breakdown of different water supplies used by the Bosca agencies in fiscal year 2021. And this is pretty consistent with how it normally is. And you'll see that the PUC purchases from the regional water, purchases from the regional water system for the Bosca agencies is roughly 2/3, 68%. And the remaining water supplies include groundwater, locally-developed surface water, other important supplies, and recycled water. And on the right side, you see some trend information over the last 20 years. So you'll see that total water use of the last 20 years is down 22%, while overall population is up 13%. And this is accomplished by residential per capita use being reduced by 31% over that same 20-year period. Overall, regional water system purchases are down 23%. And a number that we actually wanted to double-check, and we did, that recycled water use is actually up 145% over that 20-year period. I think it's important to call these out because these results all reflect investments by Bosca member agencies and their customers in new supplies and water use efficiency. Next slide. So another way to look at our trends is just kind of year by year over time. And this is just a graph that shows water demand in those blue columns, if you will. The drought years are the hatched blue lines, and that's a million gallons per day. And then the orange line is the population each year. And this shows fiscal year 1986, '87, two currents. And you'll see that we use 24% less water today in the region despite a 32% population increase. And this is really reflected in what we all know. We all use water more efficiently today than we have in the past, and especially as we've continued to experience these last two droughts in our region. Next slide. And unfortunately, you know, right now where we stand on Valentine's Day, it is really too early in the water year to declare the statewide drought over. And actually, just yesterday, the governor issued an executive order reaffirming his continued call for 15% water use reduction, that those remain in place. You know, we continue to significantly, really appreciate the efforts of all the customers to conserve water. It makes a difference. Even in a year like this year, where we've had generational levels of snowpack, this wise use of water, year over year, makes a huge difference in our efficiencies and what our overall picture looks like. And while our system looks good, much of the state remains in some level of drought. So San Francisco's request for 11% water use reduction remains in place. They have indicated they will make a final water supply determination by mid-April. But we continue to encourage everyone their wise use of water. Next slide. So just in closing, this region has made significant investments in the water supply system, both through its efforts legislatively to force San Francisco to fix the system so it will remain reliable following an earthquake, supporting ongoing capital investments to make sure that the system that we rely upon today continues to operate for the next 100 years, planned investments and efficiencies, reducing our overall use today and to benefit tomorrow, just continuing that wise use of water so we can save it for what we love. And with that, that'll conclude my remarks, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, CEO Sankula. Questions, comments? Councilman Pappin?
Hello, Nicole. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Doing all right. What efforts is Bosca helping the region with as far as capturing groundwater? We are, residents are constantly reducing their water intake, and yet our bills keep going up. So the second question is, will these costs ever be under control? Are they going to be ongoing and ever-growing?
So two questions regarding groundwater. Bosca did quite an investigation about 10 years ago to see what the ability in the broader region was for groundwater. And while there are pockets of available groundwater, we are, as you look at the peninsula side, so it's like if we think of it in areas, so the San Mateo County area, there's groundwater in northern San Mateo County, right? And it abuts and comes into Millbrae, for example. And that's that regional groundwater conjunctive use project I mentioned that San Francisco's engaged in. So we're actively supporting that project. As you move farther down the peninsula, groundwater becomes less and less available because of the geology that we have and the bay muds that are existing in it. You have to really go into Santa Clara County, so into Palo Alto and south, to actually start to access larger amounts of groundwater. And those are actually managed by a different agency, Santa Clara Valley Water District. Now, we've looked at that before, but we are initiating what we call our Long-Term Reliable Water Supply Strategy, which is Bosca's effort to look at, you know, what does Bosca do for the region and for the water customers now through 2045 for these investments in alternative supplies? And we're going to be looking at things like stormwater, groundwater, potable reuse, all of these other local supplies, working closely with our wastewater entities, stormwater entities, CCAG. We actually just had a meeting today talking about this. Some of them are what's called a "one-water" approach, about how we can make some further local investments that might have multiple benefits that we need in this differing climate change and changing climate. So that effort's just kicking off. We're actually issuing our request for proposals right now. So I'd be pleased to come and talk to you about it in a year, give or take.
And I've got-- I've got one real specific question here because we have at least two locations in Millbrae where the water is somehow running every single day. There's one on Tioga. It just keeps every single day coming out of somewhere. There's another one in another part of our city, and I think a resident actually fills his swimming pool. And it's just like, where is the water coming from? And can we be more resourceful in using it in some way?
Yeah, so that is what's-- Okay, so that's a little bit of a different groundwater supply. And I don't know what the term is being used now, but it used to be called nuisance groundwater. So it's groundwater in, that's in, what's in like the upper part of the basin, right? It's not, so it's not a source that you can tap into for a regular municipal supply. But as I mentioned, now as we're looking to climate change and how do we better manage the resources that we have available, I think us thinking about those things different and that particular type of groundwater differently is one of those challenges that we're all going to have to face. So I don't have an answer for you on what to do with that, but that is definitely as part of this discussion of how do we manage the supplies that we have locally? You know, and that kind of, that tends to come up with stormwater, too, right? It's kind of like when we have a lot of water, it starts coming out of everybody's basement. So how do we deal with that? And how can we put that to a different beneficial use?
I'd be interested to see what we come up with because it just seems like such a waste to watch every single day this water coming out of one block and just going down the drain. So we're doing our best here, and the costs keep going up. So do you have an answer for that one?
Well, you know, unfortunately, the difficult part about the cost is that, you know, we are paying, we are benefiting mostly. Now, we've got, I just talked about all these capital investments we had. But much of that, you know, we've been benefiting by a system that was built 100 years ago. And so just like your home, you need to make investments, and those investments are expensive. And the alternative is to have an unreliable supply. So our goal is to make those investments in the most cost-effective way. What we're looking at now is trying to say, how can we maximize the benefits across me? So it's like, can we bring in wastewater benefits? Can we bring in stormwater benefits? How do we access grant monies? There's a lot of federal funding now available and certainly state funding available. That's not something that we have, I think, leveraged in the past. Realistically, the expectation, when we looked back 20 years ago, the state was not giving money out like it does today, right? So we had to pay for those all ourselves. I think the future is going to be different, but it's also, you know, it's going to be costly, unfortunately. Infrastructure investments are, you know, part of, you know, living our next 50 years as a community as well. So I hear this, and it's certainly a concern more than I've ever heard before.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel? If, so I have only gone to my first two meetings, but I can tell you on the exciting side that Millbrae Sewer Treatment Plant to go to recycled water is on the list. I think there are three of us, three cities in San Mateo County, and I don't know about the other counties. Nicole, can you tell us the three cities? I put you on the--
For that recycled water project?
Well, just that we're on the list now. We're on the project list. Correct?
We have a project list that actually includes projects from every Bosca member agency. I just saw that today, and we'll be releasing this report, which is this Bay Area One Water Report Reliability Roundtable. But what we did is we surveyed the Bosca agencies and said, what projects do you have either planned to be implemented, studied, or have a concept on? And we put together a package of project sheets for all of those projects that includes the Millbrae project. And we've actually mapped them, put them on a map so you can get a sense for where they're at geographically across the region. And it's very exciting, and it's actually one of the products that's going to roll right into Bosca's strategy work.
And the other thing that we talked about at the policy meeting last week was, and the strategy plan is to look at stormwater collection for reuse, and hadn't thought about the groundwater. Councilman Fung, in your district, Lake Street can have a geyser pop up when the water pressure hits. And you'll talk to your residents on Lake, I've heard them, where the water just goes up through the cracks in the asphalt. And we did fix that last year. So I think there's a lot of exciting things that will be coming. One of the reasons the city manager and I hope to bring this to the people of Millbrae is water infrastructure is big, it's complicated, and it is very expensive. And it's probably the number one or number two complaint we get from residents. But the other way to look at that is the water, both what Bosca's doing, but the work that the city of Millbrae is doing in increasing our water tanks up on the top of the hill so we have water pressure should there be an earthquake or a fire. This is all how we keep you safe, and water is critical to life. So it's expensive, but it's really important. And it is a 100-year-old system. I didn't realize that O'Shaughnessy is 100 years old on that. So this is just really exciting times. And I know that at my first meeting, they again thanked Gina's dad for the bill for this, that put all the agencies together so that they weren't all individually dealing with San Francisco. So it's pretty exciting, and it's great to be a part of this. And there is so much to learn, like calling us an agency. We're not a city in this terms. We're an agency because Millbrae is a full water service agency in itself. So I think we'll be trying to do more and trying to look at, as we come into our goal setting, where do we want water to fit within our goal setting on that? No other questions? Typically, we don't open it up to the public. I don't know if there's public out there. Elaine, do you happen to have any hands raised?
Mayor, do not.
Very good. Then, CEO Sankula, thank you so much. I look forward to my other orientation tomorrow. It is a big learning curve, and thank you for filling in for us tonight. It was great.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor, and have a good night.
Oh, I should tell you, oh, golly. I did ask, they asked us for brainstorming, and I said, well, what about raising the dam at San Andreas Lake, which is the dam just, or the lake above us? And apparently, SFO uses that water strictly to feed into the water treatment plant, which is above Helen Drive and above Meadows and Meadows Pool. So they don't have any plans. I appreciate you checking on that. I'm finding that this agency is incredibly responsive, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Night. Okay, next up is our city manager for Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening to the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. Just real quick, before we get started, as you can see, our city attorney is remote via Zoom. And I'd like to introduce one of our new interns, Mr. Jason Yi. Jason is a graduate from San Francisco State University in Business Administration with a focus in finance. So it's a pleasure to have Jason on board with us as an intern and getting some experience under his belt. So welcome, Jason. Also, you may have noticed a little bit of a change in the agenda. The information on language and special assistance, it used to be at the back of the agenda, kind of in small print. We moved that to the front of the agenda, and that will always now be a cover page in English, Spanish, and Chinese. So this will be front and center for everybody to be able to contact the city clerk if they need any special assistance whatsoever. So I'd like to bring that to everyone's attention. All right, Mayor, as we move through the agenda, we have the calendar of events and reports and bills and claims. We, next item, three, we have approval of the meeting minutes for October 25th, 2022. Item number four, we have no reports this evening from city committees or commission chairs. Then we move to public communication. And this is, any member of the public can address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which is the adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safely in person and declaring that the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Now, I will note, this is the last time we will see this item on the agenda because the end of this month, the declaration of emergency in the state of California goes away, and we will be implementing the new protocols that our city attorney had briefed the council on last meeting. Then we move to item number six, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the agreement with Total Flow, Inc. for flow monitoring services for sewer treatment system. Item number seven is to adopt a resolution authorizing city manager designate to execute a Fifth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with West Coast Code Consultants for building inspection and plan check services. Then we move to public hearing. There is no public hearing item on the agenda this evening. Existing business, item number eight, is a status report on the multi-jurisdictional electric bike-sharing program. Item number nine is an informational item regarding the supervisory control and data acquisition known as SCADA Master Plan System. Then we move into council comments and adjournment. Mayor, real quick, just a quick update on everything that's happening here in the city of Millbrae. Our cultural, Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisor Committee has a art show poster contest, and it's inviting all, anyone, any citizen, not just Millbrae, to submit a poster. And the winning poster will promote the 2023 Millbrae Art Show coming up this May. You can download the event details and flyer for this email at the city of Millbrae's website or bit.ly/MCAA. or bit.ly/MCAA-C-A-R-T-Show, one word. That's bit.ly/MCAA-C-A-R-T-Show. Also, recruitment for commission and committee members is underway. We're now recruiting to fill vacancies on several commission and committees. And for information, you can also visit our website and the direct login is bit.ly/millbraecom. So bit.ly/m-i-l-l-b-r-a-e-c-o-m. Or if you have any questions, you can contact our city clerk, Elaine Tran, at 650-259-2414. And then just to the vacancies that we have, we have two vacancies on our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. And then we have one vacancy, Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, which is the alternate member. We have two vacancies on our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and one Cultural Arts Advisory Committee alternate member. We have one vacancy in our Parks and Recreation Commission and we have one vacancy for Youth Advisory Committee, and that's the middle school slot, and that's a regular member. So those are what we have vacancies for. And again, information can be found on our website or you can contact our city clerk. We also have Millbrae Recreation Spring Break Camp coming up. Spring Break Camp will be offered from March 27th through March 31st. You can visit our catalog, again, bit.ly/MIREC for details. Some of the camps that we have are the National Academy of Athletics All Sports Camp, Champion Tennis Camp, Digital Monkey Camp, and Communication Academy Camp. Also, just to bring to everybody's attention, we'll keep reminding our citizens that we did launch the Millbrae Works powered by C Click Fix. And we would like to thank our residents. We're getting a lot of utilization out of the C Click Fix here as we launched it just a couple of weeks ago. So for any questions, you can contact our website or you can contact our PIO, our Public Information Officer at PIO, at ci.millbrae.ca.us. And then also our Millbrae newsletter, we've received a lot of great feedback. So if people have not signed up, please sign up for e notification for our biweekly newsletter and that information is also available on the city's website. And then lastly, we have the Millbrae Fix-It Clinic, March 11th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Millbrae Library. And according to the information I have, anything that you have at your home that needs to be fixed, they say bring it in and they will show you or help you how to take it apart and properly repair it. And my notice is you can even have bragging rights to your neighbors. You come to the Fix-It Clinic and get whatever it is you need fixed, fixed. So again, that's March 11th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Millbrae Library. Also, lastly, mayor, we do have, and counsel, the Millbrae Recreation Summer Camp Fair. That's March 3rd, starting at 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And so anybody that's interested in becoming a camp counselor at our various camps and opportunities with our recreation department, there is a summer camp fair at March 3rd, starting at 1:00 p.m., going to 6:00 p.m. at the Millbrae Recreation Center. So that concludes the update and meeting agenda overview, mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Go ahead.
And just to remind the public that the city council supported legislation so that we could do a hybrid meeting and the state legislature, our representatives are working on that. So hopefully we can get more participation. The legislation, Assembly Member Pappan is working on and several others. So hopefully we can continue with the hybrid.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up on the agenda is approval of minutes. These are the regular minutes from October 25th, 2022. For the public, there has been a change in how elected officials can vote on an issue. If you've read the minutes, even if you were not in attendance, but you've read them and you see everything is okay, you can feel comfortable voting on. So it's a way to make sure that there are enough votes when there have been big changes at public bodies. So if I could have a motion in a second?
Move approval. You can say it, Ellen.
A second.
Thank you. City clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The meeting minutes of October 25th passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. And as the city manager said, we have no oral reports tonight from city committees and commission chairs. If you're at home watching, goal setting is coming up. And for our committees and commissions, please be looking at what you've accomplished in the first half of this fiscal year and what you're thinking of for next fiscal year. Thank you. Now, next up is public communication. These are for items that are not on tonight's agenda. And I only see the official people. Do we have anyone with their hands raised? And we don't, I don't have any speaker slips.
Mayor, I do not have any speaker slips and so far no one raised their hand on Zoom.
Give it a couple of seconds. Again, if you're watching from Zoom or watching from your phone, if you could please let the city clerk know that you have a comment. Seeing none, closing public communication, moving on to consent calendar. So we have three items on consent calendar. Adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safely in person and declaring that the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. This is an action item. Number six is resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Agreement, First Amendment to the agreement with Total Flow, Inc., for flow monitoring services. Also an action item. And number seven, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or designate to execute a Fifth Amendment to the professional service agreement with West Coast Code Consultants for Building Division Services and also an action item. If I could have a motion in a second for consent.
I thought we want the legal to describe the state of emergency and how to meet the ability to meet remotely a little further.
Tom, so I want you to go earlier. Oh, no, just for point of clarification, I just mentioned, this is the last time you will see this on the agenda. Yeah, due to the declaration of emergency at the state level being eliminated the end of this month.
Move to approve. Move to approve five, six, and seven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilwoman. City clerk, if no further discussion, city clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
I heard you.
The consent calendar passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, city clerk. Tonight, we have no public hearings. This, I think, is going to be the fastest, well, knock on wood, fastest city council meeting. For existing business, we have agenda item number eight. This is a status report on multi-jurisdictional electric bicycle sharing program. And we have our community, our environmental director, Andrea Papachan, who present.
Good evening, Mayor Snyder, council members. I'm Andrea Papachan from the city of Millbrae. Thank you for this opportunity. So I am here to talk an update on the multi-jurisdictional bike sharing program. So the city of Millbrae is developing a multi-jurisdictional bike sharing program with the city of Burlingame. Can you hear me okay? Loud, okay.
It's a technical difficulty.
Did I go closer? All right. Sorry about that. So the city of Burlingame and the city of Millbrae jointly issued a request for proposal last year for a qualified operator to install, to establish, install, operate, and maintain an electric bike sharing program at no cost to the cities. Okay, next slide, please. So when we developed the request for proposal, we defined the qualifications that we were looking for. So these are the kind of the main reasons why we chose Spin. The first reason is for their local experience. They're a highly qualified, experienced team capable of developing and operating a program. They've been in business since 2016 and they currently operate a scooter program in San Francisco and an electric bike sharing program in the city of Berkeley. So this successful local experience is really important in demonstrating their ability to succeed in the Bay Area. Next, Spin is owned by Tierra Mobility, which is a large micro mobility provider with programs in 21 countries. So the company has demonstrated a strong resilience in overcoming common challenges of facing micro mobility. Spin also proposed a hybrid system with preferred parking zones, and I'll go into that more later. We felt that was highly desirable for both Burlingame and Millbrae. They offered lower user fees than other proposals that we received. And they also have, will be dedicating local staff to manage and balance the bikes. So they'll hire two local employees who are actually competitively paid with W2s to manage the daily operation. And no cost to the cities. Bye, please. Actually, I do have one more comment on that last slide, sorry. The agreement has been signed, fully executed. The program will include 200 electric bikes. I also wanted to mention that both Millbrae and Burlingame applied for a San Mateo County Transportation Authority grant. We were both awarded $200,000 from the TA and each city will contribute $20,000 as a local match. So we have $440,000 to help support the program. So what we are planning, how we're planning to use this funding is kind of in three buckets. The first one is we are planning to subsidize some of the electric bikes, about $100,000 for that to provide, to help provide a successful launch. And we will also each spend about $100,000 for bike racks in Burlingame and in Millbrae in the parking zones. And then the third bucket is we'll spend about $100,000 for incentives to help launch the program. Incentives by discounts on new users or your first ride, trying to get some excitement for people to try the program. All right, next slide, please. So here's how it works. It's really straightforward. You download the Spin app on your smartphone and it shows you where the bikes are. So you can find a bike near you. It also shows the battery capacity that's remaining on the bike. Then you take your phone and you unlock it with the QR code, which is right on the handlebars. It'll run you through a number of safety rules to make sure you're familiar about the ride. Then you take your ride and when you're done, you can look back on the app and find a preferred parking location. And there'll be an incentive to park in that preferred location. And so then when you're done, you park your bike, you take a picture and you submit the picture back in the app and make sure that is parked correctly. Next slide, please. So now I just want to spend some time talking about the parking corrals or also called parking zones. They're very flexible. This is the hybrid system I was referring to. The parking corrals are designated by striping. That's either concrete vinyl or a temporary line marking. So they can easily be removed and installed or removed if we decided to change them. And as I mentioned, there's also incentivized parking to park into these zones. So for example, if you park your bike in this zone at the end of your ride, you may get like 50 cents or a dollar off your next ride. Spin has used this model in other cities and they found it to be very successful. So we're really excited about this model because of its flexibility and just the success they've had in other cities. Also, the parking zones are accessible and they're available to all other bikes as well. So if you want to park your personal bike there, that's allowed as well. Next slide, please. So we're at the stage right now where we are looking at potential parking locations. And there are 31 potential locations. 15 of them are in the city rites of wait. Next slide, please. Here's a map. And so the next step is to kind of refine these parking locations and then stripe them as parking corrals or parking zones and then we can launch program. So the pink dots are city-owned locations and the red dots are the private-owned locations. So Spin is reaching out to the private property owners to see if they're interested in having a zone in front of their building or facility. And we're also, you know, helping them if they need help reaching out. So, next slide, please. Now what I'd like to do is go over the public parking locations that have been designated. Now, this is really kind of a first draft. So the, where you see the dots, the red pins, that's actually not exactly where it's going to go, but they were, you know, dropped their, I'll explain. Basically, the parking zones that's been designated were outsourced to a third-party mapping team to optimize the locations. The process starts by analyzing various data indicators for the project area. For example, they look at population density, employment density, black indigenous and people of color, parks, tourist spots, hotel landmarks, and other indicators, like proximity to transit. And these indicators tell where people are more likely to want to use a micro mobility service like a bike. So once they determine those locations, we put pins on the map. And now what we'll do is we'll go to the site, we'll do a walkthrough at each of these locations and then more clearly refine exactly where the parking zone will be marked. So we'll check first for safety to make sure, you know, it's in a location that's safe. And then we'll just, we can add other locations if there are areas where we feel like, oh, well, you know, maybe there are certain areas that didn't come up because of density, but we still want to have a zone or a parking corral in there, which is not a problem. Okay, so this one obviously is next to our rec center. So what I'm going to do is flip through these slides just to let you see where they are. Give you an idea. Next slide, please. Next one is near a bus stop. It's east of El Camino Real. We might, you know, move it a little bit further away from the intersection depending on safety. So in this case, we might bring like our traffic engineer out with us while considering this. Next slide, please. Yep, this one is, you know, near Central Park Entry. Next slide, please. Here's on Magnolia Avenue. We might want this a little bit closer to City Hall, but that would be a good location as well. Next slide, please. And this is on El Camino. El Camino was chosen because it's near a bus stop. Next, please. So 400 Richmond, as you know, there are bike lanes on Richmond. There's several, there's multifamily buildings. So we definitely want one in this location as well. Next, please. Here's one that's near the entrance of the Spur Trail. Next slide, please. Across from the skate park, a good place, hopefully. But, you know, maybe off Millbrae Avenue for safety. Next. And this is across from a mixed-use building, the Bellamore. Next, please. This one on Magnolia is next to a big commercial zone. So there's a really big parking lot there. I think it would be ideal for a parking zone. Next slide, please. Near Rotary Park, of course, maybe up against the fence. Next. And this one perhaps would be closer to Green Hills Park. So we're going to look at this more closely, maybe move it a little bit. Next slide. Got this one on Geraldine. Got this one on Geraldine Drive. I think it's a rather busy intersection, so we'll check with our traffic engineer and possibly move it on the west side of Geraldine or north of Helen. Uh, next, please. And this is Hillcrest Boulevard, but we also, we could move this to the City Hall Library parking lot or add another one at the city, you know, at the library parking lot. Of course, there's a great location there and out of there all the time. Next, please. So this is Cypress Avenue, and then here's some other options that we put down that have not been specifically designated. Uh, and then, next slide, one more, please. I just added this one after a meeting we had recently at Monterey and Center Street. So we want to make sure we include all the neighborhoods, and we're also going to look at having them near all the schools as well. So that'd be great access for teachers and staff or people who go for recreation there on the weekend. Next slide, please. So the next steps are to discuss implementation with Spin. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with Burlingame and Spin. And then we'll finalize the, the parking locations, so we're going to do a walkthrough in late, later this month. And then we'll, again, support Spin to add any parking zones for private property owners who'd like to have a zone in front of their building. And so that's all. Thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Papajon. Question before I open it, give it to the council. Do we, will the locations come back to council to vote on, or is this something that would get approved without coming?
We were planning on approving them without coming back to council, but happy to take any feedback now or any... Fair with Spin.
So that we know what we're doing?
Yeah.
Um, councilwoman. Councilwoman Papajon.
Thank you very much. Will scooters be included in this as well?
We're not having scooters at this time. Something we definitely want to consider later, but we're going to start with electric bikes first.
Thank you for adding that location in Marina Vista, and I know we talked a little bit about just looking at that east side. I know we have the one on Silva, and then I don't know if there'd be a need in Bayside Manor, that area. It looks like it didn't come up in the assessment from Spin, but that might be something to look at as well. And then I don't know if there's a need or things that came up looking closer down to the Cappuccino End and folks' access down there to downtown and using the bikes in that area. So just for what it's worth for locations.
Thank you. I will take a note of that, and what we really like about, you know, this model is that we can add parking zones. So, you know, we're not really limited, so happy to take any back.
Thank you.
Or remove them if they're not really being used as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Papajon.
Thank you, Ms. Papajon. I have some very specific questions here. So you mentioned corrals. Will there be lighting at those locations? Don't want people parking in the dark. Do these bikes have lights?
I, um, thank you for the, those are very good questions, though I'm hesitating because I don't know if there are lights in all of those locations. That's a very good point. We can certainly consider that. And I have a representative that's also in our meeting right now, so maybe I could introduce him at this time. He's online, virtually. And, and so perhaps he could answer the question, do the bikes have lights? My hunch is they do, but I'm going to ask Derek. Derek Stahlin is from Spin, and if he could, if he's available, could he help answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Can everyone hear me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, awesome. Really loud, huh? Good evening, everyone. Yes, the bikes do most certainly have lights. They have both the front lights and rear lights as well.
Great. And what do you think, Derek, about putting bikes? What have you done in other cities about having the parking zones under lighted areas?
You know, I'm not sure that that's something that's come up so specifically, but, you know, just by nature of streetlights on the street where we put corrals, they tend to be in areas that are well-lit, just by nature. I, I do, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to consider something like that, you know, to put them in areas that are well-lit. Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yes, I'm going to ask that we do that for a matter of public safety. The next question I have is, are you removing auto parking by putting these in? I mean, at our rec center, there is limited parking as it is, so I want to know, are you taking out any automobile parking?
We haven't got that specific yet. Obviously, we don't want to remove any auto parking. I mean, I think...
Okay, that's a consideration I would suggest you make, because we don't want a backlash from the people who are already having a difficult time parking.
Understood, and hopefully at the rec center, there's another place that would be off the parking lot, maybe closer to the building.
Are we partnering with any of the schools? Because it seems like your sites are near school but not actually on the school. And I, so these are only supposed to be 18-year-olds driving these, right?
Eighteen and older.
So maybe at the high schools, we can talk to the high school district to see if we can incorporate more so with the schools on that, because I think that would be important.
And specifically for parking or for anything?
For parking.
Okay.
Or sites, because I think some people do come in on the train and need to get around. And then too, I mean, I would like to see some of these locations more located. You have one hotel, more in shopping areas, why not over by the Ralphs, the Safeway school? And why not medical facilities? So that's, the big hospital's in Burlingame, but we do have medical buildings, I think, on, in, within our boundaries. So I think it's important to include those areas here. You did mention Rotary Park, so if you're heading up that way, they could really use some stroller parking, too. I don't know if you can piggyback on that, but you see people, it's, it'd be nice to have both. But I like the incentives. That would be very helpful. I do know the managed lane group is looking to offer incentives. We might be able to incorporate that into some of our communities, communities in need. Right now, they're giving out passes for Clipper and other, the monitors for your car. So we might have some opportunities there to help our communities in need take advantage of this. And my final question is, how do, how clear are our laws when it comes to these, the use of these bikes? There's a guy around the city who's on one of those Unowheels that moves awfully fast. So are we telling people, yes, you can ride it on the road, no, you can't be on the sidewalk? How can we help our community? Maybe we can do an MC or a Millbrae Television info commercial or something, but we have to tell people so it doesn't become a danger.
Yes, I agree. We definitely want to get rules out, and when you do unlock the bike, you have to go through some of the rules.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you have to scan through them before it unlocks. So that's one way we can put more on the app. Another thing is that the bikes go up to 20 miles an hour when, with the electric assist, so that there is a limit, you know, to how fast they can go. But I'll see if Derek wants to add anything to that question.
Yeah, I think the other key thing to note, especially around launch and the few months right after launch and really up to launch, is that we're also going to be wanting to host demo days where we do kind of safety trainings with the community. And so our goal would be to do several of those around when we launch.
That'd be great. And have you seen the Millbrae Hills? Is this going to make it up a hill or not?
It will. Will make it up a hill.
And then, so we don't have a stop or a corral up at the top of the hill. You might want to think about that.
Near the entrance of the trail, but we can certainly...
Well, no, that's low on the hill.
Okay.
Ms. Papajon, you have not been to the top of the hill. It's kind of where the Chevron is and the trail begins.
Okay.
Near the reservoir. That's the hill.
I know that Chevron. Okay.
I was thinking of that. I was thinking that as well, but wasn't thinking the bikes would get up there. But that's why I asked about the scooters, because if the scooters were a yes, I was going to talk about locations up there. If the bikes make it up, I agree.
How's that? Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. That was a great program. Love to see this done and hope to see the first bike showing up ASAP. I think my green light is... Hearing okay? All right. I, I think the parking location where the corrals are, it's, and how we can strategically locate them would be quite important to the success of this program. So, you know, we've had a little discussion about that before, and I think, I appreciate adding the locations such as the schools where folks would use it during off-hours or weekends for recreational purposes. Near the Athletic Stadium where Mills is, those are strategic locations where this would probably be needed. Also, co-locating them with where the Samtrans stops are on El Camino Real would be a good idea, so that the riders could use this e-bike option as a last mile transportation. And obviously, the train station, you would already do that. And then the future development area like the Rancho where the, you know, where the major developments are going to be. So we can also encourage the residents there in the future so that they could use this as a last mile to and from the public transportations, especially the MSASP area. And also the new businesses' locations as well. We know that we have the Alexandria's getting built, right? The Gateway Station is getting ready to open. We know we're going to have thousands of folks coming in to work every day. So having these e-bike options at those newer locations, and then they could use that to come to visit our business districts on Broadway in emerging area would be a good idea so that they don't have to use private vehicles. So it also reduces congestion and reduces the parking need. So those are some of the things that I think, you know, we could consider as we try to finalize the parking corral locations. But overall, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Do you have a photo or a picture of the actual stationary racks? Or, okay. Can you go back to that?
Pull up that photograph from the presentation.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, because...
Just a parking space. It's not exactly a lockable metal rack, right?
Correct. We were, what are...
I heard you in the beginning, when you were saying what you would do with the money, I heard racks. And then if, are we talking racks or are we talking about a corral with an invisible, you know, no type of structure holding the bikes up?
Actually, both.
Okay.
So in some cases, yeah.
And so that's what I'm saying, do you have a photo of the structure that you're referring to when you mentioned the racks? Is, are there any photos of that?
No, we plan to spend about $100,000 on new bike racks to put in the corrals. I don't have any specific pictures of the racks yet. I don't think we've identified anything specific.
Are they dissimilar to any other, the types of racks that are used in other cities that Spin operates?
Yes, and Derek, maybe I'll have you comment if you have any description or want to elaborate on the bike racks that we would be purchasing.
Yeah, so I think that actually really varies based on the city. You know, we tend to try to match existing infrastructure in a city.
Right. So are there any that you could show us or anything that, at your other, the many cities that you operate in, that you would be utilizing here in Millbrae?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to think of some examples, but I, I know all sorts of racks, like there's those U-shaped type racks that, you know, upside-down U that we use in some cities, then there's kind of like that squiggly wave line rack that we use in some others. Again, it just really depends on what the city's looking for and how to match it to existing infrastructure.
Yeah, and I mean, the reason for that question is obviously, a question I asked earlier about liability on the part of Spin or of the riders, if a bike is not placed properly in that rack and it falls on a bicycle, I mean, on a vehicle, scratches the paint, or if it becomes a hazard in the road while someone's driving, or if someone trips on it. And so it's important to understand what that rack might be if we're just talking about bikes piling up, like at a school or a park or something like that. Obviously, we can see that that could be an issue for drivers, an issue for potential liability or businesses if these bikes are just piled up without proper standing in front of a business. And so that's my concern.
Thank you. Derek, do you have any other, can we, you know, take that into consideration about how the bikes stand up after they're parked or whether they tip over? Can you kind of elaborate on any, anything on that?
Yeah, so, so these bikes, the kickstands that they have, they're, they're double-sided. I don't know if you can really tell from the picture there, but they're pretty sturdy, too, the way that they're positioned. They're kind of like L's on either side of the bike, and the weight of the bike holds them down pretty good. We do have other markets where this operates, you know, similar, you know, in, in sort of these corrals, you know, without racks, and we've seen success with that. Another thing that we actively do, you know, to be able to mitigate, you know, bikes potentially piling up and then maybe one falling over, is by going around daily several times a day and rebalancing those bikes so they're balanced throughout the corrals in a city, thereby avoiding overcrowding.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then, you have a follow-up? Yeah, just follow-up.
Okay, now I'm worried about the aesthetics. We're going to need to see that, okay? You can't just, you know, decide on what this is going to look like in the very public areas of downtown. We are really trying to work on the appearance of this city, so we are going to have to see. I mean, the ones that are off the main road here, but we are really going to need to have some standards here, and I'm sorry to say that, Ms. Papajon, but in the past, not you, but city staff tend to go in a direction that this council probably would not want to go in. So I'm sorry, we're going to have to see the ones.
No need to apologize. We're happy to share what they look like.
That'd be great.
When we have them, we just haven't got that far yet. Other, either, you know, if I had that information, I'd be happy to share it, but I'd be happy to share that at a future date.
Yeah, I think that council in total would appreciate that.
Yeah. And then also, keeping with the photo that's there, that looks like a parking space. And so to the answer that was asked earlier, will it take any parking spaces? I think it might. And so if this is going to be taking up parking spaces, we need to be considerate of that, understanding the locations. I do believe that the locations should come back to this body for some type of review, even if it's just sunshine to our residents. If we're, if there's a proposal to put a corral right in front of their home or adjacent to their backyard or something like that, I think having it come back here, it provides the residents an opportunity to speak out and say, hey, this might be a concern, and gives the city an opportunity to work with you all to think about an alternate location.
No problem.
And then my last comment, I swear, is earlier last year, and there have, there were some financial issues that caused layoffs with Spin, just like some of the other micro mobility companies. How will that impact us if that happens again in this market? Will we be, will we be stuck with not just the bicycles? will we be stuck with not just the bicycles, but potential infrastructure that's put in place, such as these bike racks that we would have to either remove, or will they just be yanked out? What is some, considering, I know at the last, one of the prior meetings, there was some discussion about that. So could you speak to that? Either you or Derek?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just start briefly by saying that the bike racks, we could leave them or remove them, but they could be used. Ideally, then we would find another operator.
Okay.
So I think we would want to keep the parking zones and bike racks in place. Now, I know there were some, Derek, I don't know if you want to comment on that or not?
No, I think that's kind of perfect. I mean, I think the key is, you know, that, you know, Spin owns all of the bikes themselves. Of course, you guys would have the infrastructure. But yeah, that's really my only comment.
Yeah. And then if our city attorney, if Joan Casman wants to say anything about the legality of the program, I welcome your comment. Otherwise, I don't want to, if there's anything specific you wanted to comment on.
Hi. We have been working hand in hand with Andrea and with the representatives of Burlingame to put together, well, first of all, the RFP and now the contract with Spin. I feel that we have addressed the legalities, but obviously, there are a lot of practical considerations in the implementation that we want to bring to the council as we're doing and receive input. But we're, I think we're in pretty good shape. We have reviewed and studied contracts and programs in place in other cities and have tried to learn from issues and challenges they faced as we put together our program with Spin. But we have been very closely aligned, working with Burlingame and with your staff to get this program in its current place.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, City Attorney.
Derek mentioned rebalancing, and when we spoke previously, you talked a little bit more about the two full-time staff that would be supporting this. Just for public information and maybe for us, depending the conversations we've had with you already, could you elaborate on that a little bit and the roles those employees would play in supporting the program?
Sure. So in our scope of services, yeah, we've agreed that Spin will have two local staff between Burlingame and Millbrae, and they will, yeah, they will be rebalancing the bikes. So if someone chooses not to park in a preferred parking zone, then their operations will, you know, relocate the bike back to one of the parking zones, depending on, you know, there might be some zones that are more popular that they might bring it to, or, you know, maybe rebalance it to one that doesn't have bikes. So, and there's also a customer service, there'll be customer service number, and it'll be posted on our website. We'll definitely have it publicized that residents can call or businesses can call the operations, and they will rebalance a bike. So if there's a bike that's left in, you know, someplace that someone doesn't want to see it, then they'll agree to move it within two hours during normal business, normal business hours.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions, and some of this is for Mr. Stalen. At the City and County Association of Governments Bike Pedestrian Committee, I am hoping in our meeting next week, we will have an agenda item that discusses e-bikes on trail, and that's a speed issue. I'm glad to hear these will only go 20 miles an hour assisted. You can go faster than that on pedal, although these are heavier bikes. But it is a concern that is coming through CCGB PAC. And then the county has their own bike pedestrian committee, and they, I believe, are presenting to us at CCGB PAC Thursday, February 23rd, 7 o'clock. You guys might want to come and listen if we get that on the, it's not always that easy, and I'm the chair, to get agenda items. But there is concern about how fast these might move on a trail that is shared with pedestrians, and should e-bikes belong on the road, et cetera. And I think that's kind of happening throughout the county. And I think this project with Burlingame and Millbrae is a test for that, as well as the other locations that have been chosen for a separate pilot project. So collecting data on incidents apparently will be very important for us as a city. Haven't talked to Burlingame, but Emily Beach, Councilwoman Beach, is also on CCGB PAC. But we know we need more data so that we can figure out how to keep everybody safe on that. You had, in the staff report, it talked about a location on Palm Avenue, and I didn't think I saw it in your public locations. Has that been dropped?
None.
The only reason I ask is, in a 10-day period, we had three cars totaled, one right next to my house, one two houses down and across the street, and one at the corner. That street tends to have a lot of people that are not familiar, going very fast. And if we put a bike corral there, the bikes might get hit. And I would hate to see the bikes get hit right after the get-go. Maybe there's another way to position them. If you're keeping it, we're at the, between the 400 and 500 block of Palm is the bottom of Central Park. So it might be a really good location, but just know that just, just in this short period, enough so that my fellow residents have done a petition to the city for some kind of relief. There are three cars totaled in such a short time. But we don't, also don't want anybody getting hit on that. So I think those are mine. I agree completely with the Vice Mayor that as much as I think you guys can probably choose the locations, I think it's safer for everybody involved to do a little bit more work on the locations, do a little bit of reach, outreach to those people living nearby, the businesses nearby, and bring it back to us. Bring us back the locations. You know, some cities with more developed community art programs have bike racks that are very artistic. So I'm really curious to see what the bike racks look like. You know, at the new rec center, we simply have the curves, and I think down, I haven't seen the new ones installed at New TOD, but the grand opening is going to be April 20th. So it would be nice to get something that looks clean and elegant. And I think we need to. With this, congratulations. Last thing, you mentioned, when do you think you're gonna actually roll out? Because you mentioned having a couple of, Mr. Stalen, what did you call them? Test drives? Test events?
Yeah, demo days where we would host safety, safety programming for the community.
The last bike rodeo Millbrae had was in the fall of 2019, and then COVID hit. And if we can sequence this, maybe we can have a bike rodeo in and around the same time and let more people test drive them. We handed out 650 helmets at the last bike rodeo, and it's cooperative with the Sheriff's Department and PHP, and it might be really cool. I'm hoping this time, if we have the test location, that we'll also have scooters, because what I'm seeing in Millbrae are an awful lot of youngsters on scooters without helmets. But we'd love to get helmets to our young people in that. So. Oh, I was trying not to blast. So if we can bring that back, if we can talk a little bit, and maybe we can time a future, we haven't gotten, it hasn't gone to goal setting, I don't know if we'll have it, but I would love to bring back a bike rodeo and be able to get helmets out to people who need helmets. Certainly, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Please, please, please. Data, 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 as we proceed down this avenue, because there is a lot of funding out there. I know at MTC and CCG, so for future, the data we keep is going to be key to keeping this moving in the right direction, I hope. So.
Yep. We share your sentiment. We will be collecting all types.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes. Speaking of data, speaking of data, one thing that would be extremely valuable is to get a list of the user who uses this program. As we are able to gather more information and more user data, as we try to figure out where we should, how we should implement our bike link in the future, right? And a few other strategies that would make biking around Millbrae more successful. So that would be extremely valuable here. I'm sure they, this company will keep a long list of different data, right? And how people uses it, where they go from point A to point B, where the most frequent, where are the most frequently used routes, and how long they use it, and so on and so forth. And the users as well, how do we get in touch with them, those who are Millbrae residents, so that we can reach out to them and get their feedback. And those are the folks who use this bike day in, day out. We want to know how we can make the biking experience better in Millbrae.
Derek, are we allowed to reach out to individual users or maybe through the app? Maybe, do you have any comments on that?
So, we, we can't reach out to, you know, like a specific user. But of course, we can, we can send blasts to randomized users through the app.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Papajon, if I can just add on to that, one of the things we're finding with the CCGB PAC is that a lot of people, you know, it's a little scrape, or it's somebody cuts in front of you and you have to tip the bike, and they don't report that. But those kinds of pedestrian and bicycle incidents, for want of a better word, can help us create better trail systems on that. And it might seem minor, it's just like a lot of our residents don't want to complain when a car cuts them off if they're crossing the street. But if we don't have that data, we can't do that. So the people of Millbrae and the people of Burlingame or San Bruno, where these bikes are going to be moving, let us know your experience, because that's really how we can do better planning for that. We want these programs to succeed. So the better data, even little minor things, it'll help us fine-tune it.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay, all set? Opening it up for public comment.
Mayor, we have one speaker on Zoom. Yan.
Excellent. I can't see their name. So if the speaker could please join us, if you could please give your name. And what helps a lot is what street you live on, because it gives you an idea of what your experience is. Go ahead, Yan.
Hello. Can you speak Chinese? I want to talk Chinese. Hello. I just heard you talking about distribution of water. I think first you need to provide Chinese translation. Because Millbrae, I know Millbrae's residents, they have half are Chinese. But even if you don't provide Chinese translation, I think it's a mistake. There's another thing. About distribution of water, if your residents or community members, I want to ask you, you have to charge the water money. I think that's a problem. Because I just heard you talking about, it seems like 30 minutes.
Mayor, if I may, it sounds like this is not the agenda item.
If you have a program, if you have a program, if you have a community member, you can park the car.
We could, we, if you have a question about e-bikes, we can accept your opinion. If you want to discuss a question about water, I think we can accept your 30-minute question.
Thank you, Ms. Yan. Do we have any other hands raised?
I was just asking if our city clerk was able to record that. Thank you.
City staff, would you be able to, yes, would you be able to, you know, reach out to these residents if possible, so that we can make sure that their comments are being in, you know, being, being recorded somehow, so that the council gets to at least know what the resident wants to address the council for.
Okay. Thank you. So for the public, it looked like that was a comment that was not on the subject matter. So the city will reach out to them. With that, Councilwoman Papen, if you're.
Yeah. So we were supposed to get translation from the last meeting. What's the status of that?
I am working on the minutes, and I will try my hardest to give you the next set of minutes. Or I could translate those public comments first and provide it to the full council first.
What's the council desire? This is way off subject matter right here.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
So why don't we hang back? We'll come back, we'll come back to that. Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. All right. Ms. Papajon, if there's no other comments, I have no speaker slips. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Stalen. And can't wait to see it roll out. Do communicate with us so we can kind of coordinate some of the other programs. We want to give it a good public announcement when you're ready, when we're ready to go on that, and probably with Burlingame. And thank you.
Very much.
Thank you all. We're looking forward to launch.
Okay, last on our agenda tonight, under new business, is an informational item regarding the supervisory, supervisory control and data acquisition, or the SCADA master plan. And we have our city engineer and public works director, Sam Batista, and he is getting ready to present.
All right, great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilman Sam Batista, Director of Public Works and City Engineer. And tonight I get to present to you the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Master Plan update. So SCADA, or is a shortened version of this long term. So next slide, please. So SCADA, what is SCADA? So SCADA is a critical computer system that monitors and controls the equipment at our water and wastewater sites, which pumps, valves, the tank levels, monitors flow. And the SCADA components include hardware, scroll panel, programmable logic controllers, also the screen, also configuration of those components. Any failure or compromise to the SCADA system could potentially result in a public health crisis. So the city selected West to develop, to develop a SCADA master plan. Next slide. So this slide just shows you the various SCADA sites here in the city. The main site where the server is held, which is at the Water Pollution Control Plant. There are 19 sites throughout the city, on our water tanks, booster pumps, backflow preventers, around sewer lift stations, the stormwater. This slide just shows you what the typical equipment looks like. It's just lots of hardware and also intricate software. So as you see, the screen shows any of our maintenance, what's going on, showing what, what's tank, the level of tank, what valves are open, what controls are on and off. So we rely on this data so that we can properly work our system. So there were a few key drivers for the preparation of the SCADA master plan, and those drivers are, at the Water Control, Water Pollution Control Plant, you'd have a failed SCADA server. Wanted to eliminate dependency, proprietary equipment at all the sites. Having proprietary equipment is very expensive to maintain, and, and it's just difficult. The system is outdated, really needs upgrades. And we also need to improve cybersecurity system, and needed to assess our system for America's water infrastructure. So next slide, please. So America Water Infrastructure, what does that say? It says, we are required to reduce risk and resilience assessment, along with an emergency response plan. We have a water community of over 33, 3,300 people. So, so by doing so, we had to assess our system against a, an industry standard that's through the American Waterworks Association. So the tool provides key recommendations on how to improve the city's data systems, cybersecurity. As a result of the tool, we found that less than 30% of the recommended SCADA cybersecurity controls for SCADA have been implemented. And in addition, a baseline assessment was prepared examining the hardware, software, operational difficulty, nation. So these happen to be the finding. It's no surprise, the SCADA system is obsolete, and our several key cybersecurity vulnerabilities, those were identified. The entire SCADA system has reached the end of its life, as you, as I said earlier. As you, as I said earlier, the SCADA server at the Pollution Control Plant is, is on loan. Original has failed, so we have one that's on loan and replacement is required. Had several communication losses between the server and our remote sites in that instance. We're also trying to migrate away from this proprietary process, full hardware. Well, you know, the difficulty was that the distributing vendor for the, for that hardware can only service your hardware. We're trying to standardize the equipment throughout the whole system, so that programming is easier, maintenance is readily available. By doing so, our operations and maintenance staff address the critical events in the family matter. And also, we are required to assess the system, June of 2023. Next slide, please. So here we have the implementation plan, and this shows us that the projects are organized five phases, years. So Phase One is used as the program management task, which spans entire master plan duration, and is intended to ensure that the program implementation plan executed on budget according to the schedule. Phase One includes the core improvements to the Water Pollution Control Plant data server, improvements to communication in the network, and several projects to address the cybersecurity gaps identified in the act that was connected back in 2028. So the remaining phases focus on expanding data, the core SCADA upgrades, all remote sites, and also at the Water Pollution Control Plant process area. So I just wanted to, just focusing on Phase One at the moment, just because the foundational projects is what we're really looking at in the near term, because we would like to upgrade that, the backbone, along with upgrading or procuring a new. Next slide. So this slide just pretty much shows you the costs and the improvement years of the different phases. So for all, for all the, all phases included, we're looking at a seven point test and to upgrade our system. So the project is currently funded by Water and Sanitary Sewer Enterprise Funds and within the current water serving. Next slide. So this slide just shows you implementing timeline, showing that, you know, in 2021, we did the Risk and Resilience Act, Emergency Response Plan, Data Master Plan, and we, who we are today, giving you this update, and hopefully in this year, we can start implementing Phase Zero, One, and then the next fiscal year. But our, what we're looking at for the whole entire Data Master Plan recommendation is about, you know, five to seven years, so five years would be very aggressive. So we're looking at 2027 as completing all those recommendations. And from 2027 to 2047, staff will continue to assess our system, and if there are any regulatory upgrades that we need to do, then we'll be doing that on the way to 2047 and reassessing and probably upgrading some of the components. Next slide. And so, in conclusion, what our next steps would be is to turn to the city council to approve a consultant services, with Phase Zero and Phase One, utilizing allocated fiscal year 22, 23 C I D, and which would allow us to replace a SCADA server at our Water Pollution Control Plant. It will allow us to leverage new hardware at the both sites, as well as migrate away from these proprietary equipment that we can standardize. And then in the future, we will be at the next phase, three and four, addressing communication tendencies, well, cybersecurity, vulnerability. So with that, that concludes my short presentation, and I also do have Jerry Smith of West Coast wanting to answer any of our questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Batista, and thank you for a really great staff report. I mean, it made the importance really clear. It was short and brief. I really enjoyed reading that staff report, and I do watch a lot of news, so I'm really glad we're stepping on this and with that. So thank you. Council, comments? In which case, obviously, you did such a great staff report and, and a report, well done. I believe this is an action, oh, I'm sorry, opening it up for public comment?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Closing public comment. If there can be a motion, oh, this is informational. Go forth, do good on that.
Appreciate it.
You know, there has been a lot in the news about domestic terrorism attacking civic infrastructure, so this is great. I'm really happy to have this come in front today. Okay, that is the end of our regular council agenda. It's a light agenda tonight, which leaves plenty of time for council comments. I know with our new council members, you've all had a chance to wear some of your hats, both regionally and locally, so please share with us. The other thing that I've noticed, a few years ago, Millbury changed, you know, any council member, if they have something they want on the council agenda, can ask, and the mayor has 60 days to get it onto agenda. Basically, it's just so that we can time it. But I think this is also an opportunity that, given the work that all of you do with your other hats on, is there something that we need to be aware of that needs to come to a council agenda? Please use this time to make sure that we all know that it's, that you'd like it there. So with that, is there someone who would like to go first? I think I had Councilwoman Papen, I can, nobody looks at me, nobody makes eye contact. Councilwoman Papen, please go ahead. No, we don't need a timer tonight. We're not using a timer.
Okay.
We're doing city business.
Rolling right along. I was appointed to the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee, and our first meeting tomorrow by C CAG. M T C just released a call for projects, which our Mobility Hub grant, we hope, would be a part of that. So we were just notified of that today. Hopefully, we can take advantage of that. San Mateo County's Disaster Recovery Center is open now through the 22nd, 9 to 7 p.m., and it's at the Event Center in San Mateo. The Gala for the Millbury Education Foundation is on February 25th. Please, if you haven't gotten tickets yet, join us. I believe it's an 80s theme, and most of us have burned our clothes from that era, but might be hard there. I do want to say, I want to thank the city staff, those new reflective curves are really nice. The ones down on Main Street, or Main Street there and anywhere else, they really stand out, so I hope we can get those throughout the city. And I have a meeting tomorrow with the Acting Chair of M T C. Hopefully, we're going to do another bus tour throughout San Mateo County, so we can not, we can show Millbury about all of our 20 cities and really educate them on the possibilities for funding throughout. And we are also going to try to establish a, the M T C directors or commissioners from San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, and San Francisco to address the grade separations. If you haven't heard yet, Caltrain got their funding for electrification, so that is coming, and now we are all going to have to deal with the grade separations, and we do need to address the fact that we have neighborhoods that are probably going to need more grade separations, so that our residents are not isolated for 10 to 15 minutes at a time. So I don't know how we go about that, but that is not acceptable to our residents in at least one or two neighborhoods. So it's got to come out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cahillan.
Things have been good and busy. I went to the new council members' conference, learned a lot. It was wonderful to meet representatives from other cities across the state and hear what things are similar, what are different, learn from each other. A lot of great community events. The Lunar New Year Festival was so wonderful, what a great success. I think looking, sitting up on stage and looking out at the crowd and just seeing a sea of faces, just full of pride and joy, and it was really special. Congratulations to the Millbury Cultural Committee and all the volunteers who put that on. The Millbury Lions had their movers and shakers dinner, really supporting all the programs across our city that care for the youth in our community, and that was a wonderful event. Rotary's New Year's Dinner and fundraiser for our schools was another wonderful success. Thank you for mentioning the gala, I was going to mention that as well, and tomorrow's the last day to buy your tickets, so I'll add that piece. The San Mateo County Library System is doing a lot of great activities and events, especially this month around Black History Month, so I encourage folks to check out their websites and social media. I'm on the Homeless Subcommittee, and hopefully we'll get to meet soon, but I've been trying to do some outreach there, so I visited the Catholic Worker House in San Bruno last month, and I'm working with Samaritan House to do a tour of their shelters and hoping to get to do some visiting and shadowing with Life Moves as well. We had the first meeting of the East Side Specific Plan Subcommittee, just getting conversations started there. I have the first commute.org meeting Thursday, so that'll be my first time meeting with And, you know, just one thing I wanted to share is, as a council member, I've come to more events in Millbury than I ever have before, and I think a lot of times we get caught up in our busy lives, and we hear about events and we think, oh, I just don't have time to go to this. And I really encourage folks to find the time. I am just enjoying all our city has to offer. It's a pretty incredible community with wonderful folks putting on so many events and activities. It's just a gift to be even more a part of the community, and I encourage others to join in.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Fang.
Thank you. So just kind of want to go back to a little bit about what we saw today earlier with the public speaker doing item number eight, the bike program. We're very passionate about regarding issues of water bill and a few other things, and want her comments to be heard. It's that she's not necessarily aware of the order of the specific agenda item and the rules that apply when it comes to public comment during a council meeting. So much of these issues could really be attributed to just a language barrier. So I think as I'm aware that we all value our residents' input, it also goes to show the importance of us reaching out to our residents where they are and communicating in a way that they could understand. So as far as the Lunar New Year, the street fair, it was a huge success, as Ms. Cahillan just said a little earlier. Our local businesses were packed during that event, and there are potential businesses even wanting to sign up for booth for just any upcoming Millbury festivals that has to offer, so that's a wonderful, that's a wonderful sign. Thanking the Millbury Cultural Committee and many volunteers such as Marion Kong, Yan Hua, John Chang, Alice Kwong, Steve Hong, John Munus, and many others. I know, as I start naming names, I'm going to forget someone, but, but the entire team who worked extremely hard to make this event successful, we're thankful for that. The weather is a bit chilly, but even Mother Nature could not defeat the warmth of our community spirit, who want to celebrate our heritage and our rich culture. So attended a very well-attended community meeting with our Millbury small business community on February 9th. Also had a discussion with regards to the, the community members in the business community regarding Lunar New Year, street fair, and everyone said it was one of the most successful event in Millbury history. Just some of the testimony that I've heard is that from Pahnew, overwhelming sale, five employees were constantly busy. From Amqu, healthy food, never had so many customers in the store. Customers from Oakland, New Peters, all over Bay Area, the entire parking lot was full. They brought in unexpected sale for the day. Suzanne Bakery, they were completely sold out on everything throughout the entire, the entire store. Even furniture stores, Boba Tea, there were just customers everywhere. So it was extremely successful to not only the event itself, but also our local businesses as well. Also during the meeting, we discussed traffic calming measures and how important it is that, as we look forward to implement our Grand Boulevard vision on Al Camino Real and bringing the traffic safer, not only for the motorist, but most importantly, enhancing our pedestrian safety and the pedestrian experience. So as many of the business community are concerned about that. Also talked about parking strategies and how important it is to ensure that there's sufficient parking throughout the downtown areas, and also the, discussed the vision of peripheral parking garages and how they could be beneficial. Also discussed some issues regarding the unhoused, and brief the public regarding our new website, how they can submit requests, but also discussed the value of a hotline, so that we can ensure timely responses to those individuals who are in need. Again, thank you, the organizer, for the entire MCC team who put this great meeting together. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I'll start. Not much can be said about the events of the Lunar New Year street celebrations. That already hasn't been said, so I just want to say I had a great time, my family had a great time, it was a great event. I was also afforded the opportunity to serve our elderly at the self-help for the elderly event, serve Lunar celebration as well, and it was, was great, being joined by fellow council member, staff. We had a good time. Additionally, the Rotary Lunar New Year Celebration the other night was also a really good event to attend, it was my first. And then yesterday, the Millbury Cultural Arts Advisory Committee met, and I was not able to attend as I was called away for an emergency to support a student. But what I got from committee was that we're, we'll have a draft of our 2023, 2024 work plan at our March meeting, and be, it'll be ready for presentation to the council March or early April. We will, we are looking forward to a art show date of May 19th through the 20th, and as was already mentioned by the city manager about the poster contest. So keep that in mind. And then lastly, on Saturday, I was able to hold what is being said as the first community forum in my district. I thought that was, thought it was a great success. We had over 40 residents show up, and I think, you know, while we'll be having what was discussed, comments, the questions and concerns brought up, presented in the Millbury, in our city newsletter, I think more than anything, I hope that it is, serves as a model for other districts, for my other council members, to be able to empower our residents to, to have voice. have voice, to speak directly to us as, as a council, to allow them to hold us accountable. And I think that's a, a big part of what the forum was for, for accountability, for me as a council member, but also to serve as a model for us all to, to be able to listen and empower our residents to have access to us in a transformative and impactful way. Other than that, thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I can't say anything other than what everybody has said. Millbrae's public events are back, and they really were fabulous. I cannot believe how packed the Lunar Year Festival, I was there until about 3 o'clock. I think there was a football game, so some people went home to watch the game, but just everybody having a lovely time. We're coming back, we're coming back from the pandemic, so it's been really beautiful. I want to give a huge shout out to the Sheriff's Department and the first, our, our Fire Department. We had plenty of security on hand, especially in light of what happened to Half Moon Bay, and it was a beautiful, lovely, and safe event. Okay, on to business. For everyone watching, the mayor's coordinating council is back in person, we had it at the rec center, staff is in attendance. One of the things we're trying to get all the community groups to do is to share with the city clerk, your events, even if you've just got a tentative date right now, send it, and, but if you've got the flyer, even better, send it to the city clerk, and she can tell you the best way to reach you, but that way, we're going to try not to have events piled on top of each other, which really happens in October on that. But we're, we're back in person. If we, if you did not get an invitation to it, please make sure both the city clerk and I know that we've got the current representatives from your organization, and all organizations are welcome to that, and that is the fourth Thursday at 8:30 in the morning at the rec center. So it'll be coming up in two, week and a half, week and a half and about. I already talked about Bosca. The other thing that I could add, San Bruno and SFPUC, SFPUC, they're officially drilling water in the, into the aquifer here in Millbrae, and one of the things we talked about was using storm waters for aquifer refill or on that. So with San Bruno having taken the water away for years, I am concerned with soil subsidence and a break of an aquifer, so I'm just telling public work staff, it's one more thing we need to watch, especially with saltwater intrusion, but it's great to be with the other board members there, some of whom have this background, and we can talk hydrology, which is really fun, but something we really need to look at. At the SFO Community Roundtable, SFO gave a report, they're back to about 85% of their passengers, but they are running a lot of planes, I'm getting a lot of complaints for how noisy it's been. Of course, we've had bad weather, which means the airplanes are taking off right over us, but that's usually, it's called reverse flow, we'll be seeing more of that. SFO also reported that San Francisco gets the immediate 15% of their revenue straight off the top, goes up to San Francisco. Then they talked about the new hotel, and then they said, oh, well, we share that with Millbrae, and I said, no, you don't. So I think that that's an avenue for communication with SFO. We are not even really in the noise contour, this is for the public, the Federal Aviation Administration, which is up for reauthorization right now, does not even include the noise that impacts Millbrae in the calculations for noise. SFO also admitted that the insulation programs that they put into many Millbrae homes in the early 1990s have failed, and I know a councilwoman has mother-in-law in Daly City where the same thing has happened. If those homes are still within the contour, SFO is going back and trying to fix the bad windows that they put in then. But for us, that means three homes on the corner of Nandina where it turns into Cuarto. So really, it's because FAA does not pay attention to the noise impacts that we hit, it's the noise in back of the planes instead of the noise underneath that plane. That's an oversimplistic model, but that's what's going on. So hopefully, we will, we have a leg, an ongoing legislation committee. We do not know who the new congresspeople will be. One of the biggest losses of Jackie Speer is she was one of the big voices on the Fly Quiet Caucus back in DC, so hopefully, we'll have to rebuild that here. She was a great voice for us and a big loss for the county. Bike pedestrian, I hate to report that we did not get any of the grants we applied for in the last year, however, a huge shout out to staff for getting the Safe Routes to School grant and the work that will be going on to that, and, and when it's time, we can bring an update on that. So I'm looking at Andrea Papa John, who, and our engineer, our new engineer, both of you wrote, wrote the grant, so congratulations. It's the first grant we've been able to bring back to Millbrae in, in a number of years. We've gotten some special money, where, where we haven't gotten a grant, so they find some money, but congratulations on that. And the other thing that happened at BPAC last two weeks ago is CCG staff gave a report on what are considered priority equity communities or equity-focused communities, and for the very first time, Millbrae is now a equity-focused area. And we had asked them to come tonight and speak on what does that mean, because frankly, I don't quite know what it means, but for Millbrae, that means our entire east side and Broadway, so I think all of Broadway down on the east side. What I think that means is it's going to give us more points when we're trying to get funding. I think it will mean that the regional agencies that are doing environmental impact reports or statements will have to pay better attention to us and possibly have to mitigate. So to me, this is exciting. Now, CCG staff claimed that they did this back in 2021. I read every report, and this is the first time I've seen it, so it's kind of a good news. It's a good news, it's going to help us. This led to a meeting I had today with Dr. Cordero of the Ramitush Aloni, talking about future collaborations here in Millbrae, and how being a designated equity-focused area or a PEC, there's multiple different terms on this, can help us get some projects, hopefully some funding in, some support for improving Millbrae on that. Emergency Services Council has officially created a committee that I'm in charge of to go back and debrief the last five disasters we've been living through the last three, four years, and try to figure out how well communication is working. I'm going to tell you, as, one story is during the flood of October 23rd, 2021, when Millbrae Avenue flooded, the city, our staff asked Caltrain to close the entrances or the exits off of 101, they did not, and I was mayor then, and I got phone calls from people saying, you let me drive straight into the floodwaters. So that kind of communication is what this committee is going to look at, are intra-agencies communicating with each other and how we might improve that, even as now, we hopefully will be rolling out some more pilots or tests of the zone haven. If we can go a little while without a disaster, knock on wood, we can begin to test some of the evacuation planning. As Councilwoman Kahelen mentioned, we had our first East Side Specific Plan Subcommittee. The sad news is that the city manager has kind of told us it's going to be about a two-year project to bring that specific plan forward. Right now, we're just hoping to figure out what the consultant that will eventually hire, what should go into the RFP on that. So that's the sad news, that it'll take longer, but the, and the other part of that is that the city will be rolling out, and I hate to steal District Two's councilwoman, but they'll be rolling out public meetings for the new parks updates, if you want to take that one, but what we're going to do for the East Side Specific Plan will be entirely separate, and if you want to come back and talk about the parks on that, because that was exciting news, and I ran into some of your residents of District Two, and they can't wait on that. So I think, oh, the last thing in terms of meeting with Mr. Dr. Cordero today, his recommendation is that the city create a committee or a commission, ad hoc or not, to talk about the land acknowledgement. I know people have been asking about doing a land acknowledgement before city public functions, but he said today, it's better to let it come from the grassroots up. So I think that this is a great project that can go to the new social equity committee commission and let them work their way through that, but it was, the other thing for Vice Mayor, he said that they have been doing murals up in San Francisco, so if we can find a respectful location, we might be able to pull the pieces together and get a mural for that project. So it was, again, a great meeting on that, and I think that is, checking my notes, everything here, so.
Can I ask that we close in memory of the victims of the 7.8 earthquake in Turkey and Syria, and there's, it's up to 40,000 lives lost at this point, please?
Absolutely, so the councilman in case, I, I can't tell what the public can hear. Close in memory of the lives lost in the Turkey and Syria, 7.8 and 7.6 earthquakes?
7.8 earthquake.
Two, there were two. 7.8, 7.6, and also in memory of Supervisor Richard Vaillier, one of the very earliest people in the recycling world, somebody I've known for decades. He and I were on the state committee, State Commission for Recycling Market Development. He passed away expected, but quickly, and in memory of him and to his family and to the recycling world. It's a big loss, we're a small world, the recycling world, so in memory of the people who've lost their lives in Turkey and Syria, and to Supervisor Vaillier. With that, closing council meeting at 9 o'clock.
Mayor, now, I think our record was 8:45, so we did not beat the record tonight.
I wanted everybody to have a chance to, to, so the public would know what we.